Roll call, please.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Here.
Ms. Peng?
Here.
Ms. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Podolsky?
Here.
Ms. Madiker?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Here.
All present.
Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Party Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Carpet of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 5th, 2021. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. So, now we're going through our agenda, and everyone should have the meeting material on their hand, so we're open for public comments on the resolutions only. On resolutions only. Public comments?
Yes.
Resolutions only.
Yeah, we pull again, the meeting's first sponsor, someone wants to...
Resolutions, alright. Crystal? You know the drill. Anybody else before he comes over? Come on, hurry up, man.
Actually, Board President, if it's possible, can we have...
No, no, no.
Okay.
Alright. See none, so we're gonna move on. So, for the resolution, can I have a motion for the personnel item? Personnel, labor relations, that item only.
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, Mrs. White, Mohan Patel and Mrs. White.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes, motion is carried.
Thank you. And now we have two, three, and four, Administration, Curriculum Instruction, People and Special Services. Can I have a motion on those, these three items?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Peng and Mohan Patel.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes, motion is carried.
Thank you. And the last item is the Finance Resolutions, all the items in the Finance section. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, again, Mohan Patel and Mrs. Peng.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes, motion is carried.
Alright. Upcoming meetings, so next month, we're going to go back to our regular routine. We're gonna have a caucus meeting at the Education Center on November 18th, and the public meeting will be on November 23rd in J.P. Stevens. So, if you see your agenda, there might be still saying J.P. Stevens, but the caucus meeting will be at Center on November 18th. Alright, so now we're opening up for Board Member comments. Let me start by asking two questions that's on a lot of people's mind to Dr. Bragan. One is the water issue with the Middlesex County Water, and the other thing about, is about this morning with the Governor of DeKalb, state of emergency, there was a lot of discussions about, you know, should the schools be closed, should the school be open, delayed opening, and so should be any announcements, you know, for the school remain open. So, Dr. Bragan, if you can address these two questions, that I appreciate it.
Sure. First regarding the water, we got notice, I got notice, and we didn't get any notice directly, and a number of our schools, you know, use the Middlesex Water Service. I found out from a community member who shared something with me on last Thursday night around 10:00 PM, that they had a notice in their mail indicating that their water had a higher than permitted level of PFOAs, which I really wasn't sure what that was until we looked it up, and it's a chemical related to things like Teflon and nonstick devices and some other fire retardant things that are used to fight fires, but somehow sometimes gets into our water. And it was the results of a test I was conducting on August 2nd, and it indicated that the levels, I believe, were somewhere around 34 parts per trillion, which the acceptable level is less than half that in the 14 range, I believe. Don't quote me on those exact numbers, but obviously, once I found that information, and, you know, there was some other information contained in that notice that said, you can't boil that away either, you know, so even boiling water wouldn't remove those for, to make it potable for consumption. So, needless to say, we were immediately concerned, and that evening, as well as early the next morning, I contacted our food services provider, who was already planning to distribute hot chocolate for the morning breakfast for the students that we disposed of those, we didn't do that, and went with prepackaged juices, and we didn't use any water in the food production. They have since started installing filters for their use in the food production capacity so that the water, the filters will take out the PFOAs. We also contacted our facility managers at each school and shut down all the drinking waters, fountains in every building. We did it in every building in the district, because at that time, I wasn't exactly 100% sure what school, what school was affected, what wasn't, and the public's perception may not know, you know, this one is Middlesex Water, this one is the Edison Water Company, and so on and so forth, so, you know, we'd rather err on the side of caution. We do have one or two people that have expressed they want to volunteer significant amounts of bottled water, 20,000 gallons. They're being delivered tomorrow, one of those. We also secured bottles of water, we have emergency reserves of those, and we have those distributed to the buildings for students that need. If this continues on an ongoing basis, we'll have more of those water bottles available. Right now, our facility managers are looking into getting filters for all of our water fountains, and so we will make sure the water's clean before anybody can use it, but we also have to make sure we have filters in our home economics rooms, in our faculty rooms, bathrooms, anywhere where people may have the opportunity to drink water. So, we're working on it in the long run, it's a long run and a short run solution. I also contacted the Edison Water Company, because my concern would be, as you as constituents, right, and the public and our students, well, what are the PFOAs in the Edison Water Company if they're so high in the Middlesex Water Company? And in conversations with representatives from there, we found out there's very different types of water. The Edison Water Company's what's called, they use what's called surface water, which is water that comes from streams and lakes and in reservoirs, which is different than groundwater, which sometimes has more opportunities for the chemicals to leach through the, that have been exposed in the environment, to leach down and get into the well water. So, the Edison Water Company assured me that their water is what's known as surface water coming from reservoirs, and it's not as impacted. And their level of PFOAs, at the last time they measured, was significantly lower than the allotted amount at 5.3 parts per trillion. So, that water is safe for consumption. So, in the next few days, we will take and make 100% sure which schools are using the Edison Water Company, and those water fountains and those, and those buildings and those water distribution centers will be allowed to be used. So, that's where we are with the water, we'll keep you posted on that. And again, it was last Thursday night, I was made aware at about 10 o'clock, and we tried to react as quickly as we could for that, and we'll keep you updated as things change. Regarding the Governor's State of Emergency, you know, the Governor does that pretty much when he feels fit and when he feels it's appropriate, and he declared a state of emergency, I believe it was last night, is when it started. But a state of emergency doesn't mean that everything has to close. As a matter of fact, all the state government officers were open today, and by declaring a state of emergency, he doesn't in effect close anything or require or expect us to close anything. He wants to alert the public to the potential dangers, right, regarding typically, it's a storm, some type of storm. Obviously, today was a nor'easter involving water and rain and flooding, you know, sometimes it could be related to, you know, a snowstorm or blizzard or hurricane or what have you. And the decisions are never easy on whether we want to have a delayed opening, when we want to close school, especially the ones where we don't have a lot of immediate notice. That declaration was made last night, I was in consultation with our other superintendents in the area and other people in our town to find out what's the status of our community, where do we look like in the water, what are our thoughts? And all the indicators that I had and that my colleagues, you know, in Woodbridge and Saro and Mid-Tech and all the neighboring towns, East Brunswick, who decided to do a traditional day as we did, was it wasn't gonna be anything like the last storm, where 10 inches, 10 inches of water fell in a short period of time that overwhelmed almost all the drains and little creeks and things around the community, that it wouldn't be that bad this time. Now, in all honesty, as I drove in this morning at 5:30 from Tom's River, it was bad. I was thinking to myself, as I got past the exit 100 around Bellmore, yeah, maybe we should've done something different. The problem is, at 6 o'clock, it's already too late, and there would've been an opportunity in retrospect that perhaps a delayed opening would've been better, but it was too late already. As I came down Amboy Avenue at 6:30 this morning, there was a lot of water on the road, and I had already saw, you know, one of the dapper buses we contracted picking up our students on the corner of Hoover and Amboy. So, I, you know, we did the best we can, I went to all the buildings, we did have some delays, obviously, you know, Grove always floods, which was flooded outside of John P. Stevens. We had a few minor issues in most of the buildings. One issue had a little larger roof leak, but, you know, our team did a great job and we mitigated it. In retrospect, if I could look back on this one, I may have decided to, in consultation with the Board President, decided to have a delayed opening, but you live and learn, and that's where we are in that.
Yeah, just to add on top of that, so, because there's a lot of, you know, parents were not sure about the transportation stuff, so a lot of the students were a little bit late today, so is it possible we can just have the schools just relax a little bit on the tardy policy for the students for today?
100%. And there's another piece that, thank you, Mr. Shi, from a point that I forgot. Our schools have been pretty relaxed on that as a whole from the start of the school year, recognizing the issues we have with transportation as well as just coming back to school and getting acclimated to things, but any type of inclement weather, and today, I would say this morning, was definitely an inclement weather day. Parents always have that choice. If I'm not safe, even though school's open sending my child, keep them home. If you don't feel comfortable putting your child on the bus, the bus stop, driving or walking to school, and the school was open, keep them home that day. Obviously, in this year, when it's been a difficult return for a lot of our staff and students, we would be understanding on a day like this, one, if you were late, as Mr. Shi mentioned, or if you decided to stay because of your lack of comfort and feeling safe and sending kids in the morning, if you chose to have them stay home today, and that was the day to put them over the attendance, we would definitely take that into consideration, 100%.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask, so just, I just had a suggestion, Board President, is it okay if I talk? Okay. So, I just had a suggestion that on days of inclement weather and, you know, when it's raining, if the doors in the building, school buildings could be opened slightly early, because today was a really bad day, and even if you, myself, just getting from my house, from my garage to my car, which is hardly like, not even, you know, three feet, I was drenched. I didn't have an umbrella, I was drenched. So, you know, a lot of people might want to drop their kids to school, so if we have like a longer period of time when the kids can be dropped, that would help in reducing the traffic on the road, as well as students waiting outside the building and getting wet, so if we can just open the doors early, that would be helpful. That's, that's all.
That makes total sense, and we'll review that with the principals. The one problem with that is if there's a large number of students, we don't have staff to supervise them, but we'll look into how we can do that and maybe set that up in these, you know, somewhat of emergency situations. Absolutely. And one other thing, I debated, and I think some people inquired, you know, can we send out a notice that says, hey, everything's fine, we're opening, and it's standard operating procedures today? We probably could've, but my concern with that is that a parent or student gets a notice at 6:00 in the morning that says, everything's fine, your immediate response when you get that notice is, oh, school must be delayed or closed, and we didn't want to give the wrong message. Some parents did request, well, you could probably do that anyway, put it on the website, and we'll reflect on that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have something.
Yes.
Regarding the Middlesex Water Company, I'm actually affected by it, and when reading, and I'm looking for clarification, initially, I had read somewhere that the PFOs, PFOAs hadn't changed, but the rules and regulations had changed. So, it wasn't that our water was getting worse, it was that they just made it a little more strenuous, the rules. And I would like to thank the district, because I did get a notice that there's going to be a meeting on Thursday night at J.P. Stevens with Middlesex Water Company, and I want to make sure that I get there to see if anyone has any questions and what they have to say about what we should be doing or what we need to do, because they specifically, in the letter to me, said the water was coming from a particular reservoir. It wasn't from all over, it was just dealing with, if you got your water from this particular reservoir, you were affected by it. So, I'm actually looking forward to getting more direct answers. And anyone else interested, I was very glad to see that we're gonna be hosting it at J.P. Stevens on Thursday night at 7:00. Yes?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Alright. Everyone hear it? Thursday night, J.P. Stevens, with Middlesex Water Company, and thanks, Dr. Bragan and the township for working that up. Alright, so, we open up for other members, so I'm gonna go that way. Bureau, anything to say?
No.
Okay, Sherry?
Just one thing, I mean, at the last board meeting, I had requested for the, you know, for the Facilities and Finance Committee minutes, which are not, which were not presented today, and I know another committee meeting, a committee happened, another meeting happened for the Facilities and Finance Committee, we don't have those minutes as well, so I would appreciate if whoever is the Board Chair, if they can, you know, do this in a timely manner, so that other Board members are kept in the loop, because Facilities and Finance is such an important area, and we ought to know what's going on, what is being discussed, what plans are being made, so that we can contribute, you know, in that discussion. It should not be that we get to here during a board meeting, when we are supposed to approve something, and so, I would appreciate if these can be presented to the entire Board in a timely manner.
Okay, so, thank you. I think Mohan has the minutes, it was just, it was not uploaded on the, on the, whatever the app we have.
I mean, it's not on the agenda at all.
Yeah, but, no, he can, he has it ready, we can talk about it, and he can send it, have Judy send it to all the Board members tomorrow. Okay, he has it ready, what time, when his turn.
Can I say something else?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, right now, we opened this meeting for the Board Member comments. Typically, the committee minutes are read before the meeting is opened for the Board Member comments, so it was not part of this agenda. It has just been added now, and he's reading it as part of his, you know, Board Member comments, and not as part of his committee meeting minutes.
I understand. So, he called me in the afternoon and said, you know, why the thing's not on there, and I said, could you contact Judy to see if she can get it on, and I guess, you know, was not, we didn't get it on in time, but he's gonna read it, and that will be provided to all the Board members after the meeting.
Thank you. That's all, I don't have any more comments.
Thank you. Yuna? Shannon? Okay. Mrs. White, yes.
Okay, actually, I have two things. Okay, I had the opportunity to view the ETA Candidates Night, I believe that's how it was labeled. One question that was asked pertaining to the Township Board of Ed Liaison Committee, I was surprised that the Liaison Committee's effectiveness was singled out as a question for the candidates who attended. In addition, I was surprised to learn that the majority of the candidates did not know the purpose of the committee or the accomplishments that have happened since January. With that thought in mind, I wanted to clarify the purpose of the Township BOE Liaison Committee. Ignorance breeds mistrust, and I do not want that to happen to this amazing committee. The purpose of the committee is to create an open dialogue between the Township and the Board of Ed. I am pleased to report that we have accomplished this. Securing vaccines and testing for staff, the acquisition of new properties, creating community awareness of crossing guard shortage, providing FEMA information on our district website, and assisting in facilitating a program for interested students involving the police and fire departments. Ms. Ship Freeman and Deputy Chief Toth are working on that project. Have all been a product of the teamwork of the members of this committee. However, the most important contribution from this committee is the collaboration and partnership we are fostering between the Board of Education and the council when collaborating on new ideas. This committee consists of three council members and three Board of Ed members. The Superintendent, Mayor, Business Administrator, Deputy Fire Chief, Office of Emergency Management Coordinator regularly attend our monthly meetings. Some special guests have been Assemblyman Kara Bincheck, representatives from the Police Department and the Department of Health. We have had attorneys from both the council and Board of Ed attend our meetings. In addition, we always have updates from community organizations, such as Edison Art Society. The meetings are productive and we cover many topics. I assure you, there is no political agenda, and our focus is on helping the people of our town and especially our students. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 9th, and this will be our ninth meeting. For your information, in the past, they only had, they only met one time, and with that in mind, I find it ironic that this committee has been singled out when you consider the consistency of the meetings, the personnel in attendance, and the committee's list of accomplishments in the last 10 months. As committee chair, I think the committee has been slighted by people who are misinformed, and that is so sad. I, to have it said that the committee is not effective or political, is just insulting to the committee members who attend every meeting and unselfishly give their time. Ineffective does not apply to this committee. We are the complete opposite. Thank you. Virginia White.
Thank you very much, and I just want to add on top of that, I also watched the ETA debate. You know, first, the question was asked is, there's a new committee called the Township Liaison Committee, it is not new, and that committee, at least I knew, when Dr. Healan was here, we had that committee, so I don't know what's the definition of new is, and that's a lot, lot years ago. And to add what Mrs. White has said, this year, the committee is probably most effective, and before, if I remember, the meeting was on a quarterly, and sometimes the meeting got cancelled, and they have this meeting on a monthly basis. And there was another question that, at that ETA meeting, is about filling the vacancies. I myself went through three vacancy filling, you know, since I've been on the Board, and the question was, in the past decade or so, the process of filling the vacancies has been changed every time, which is absolutely incorrect, and at least three times that I was involved, we followed exactly the same process, the exact same process. So, just want to, you know, point that out, and for the people who, the new candidates who were interviewed, I just want to make the information correct, so you don't, you are not misinformed. Thank you. Carol?
Okay. One of the things that makes me most proud and happiest about serving on the Board of Education is when our students take an active role in the Board of Ed process. It shows that they're beginning to take an interest in our schools and their future. I love that we offer virtual opportunities for them to be part of a meeting remotely and still have time for homework and studies and a good night's sleep. One thing that is really concerning me lately is exactly what kind of example we are. The adults in the room, up here on the Board and in the visitor section, are providing them of leadership, collaboration, and appropriate discussion. You see the movies and shows on TV these days, and that, the loud and violent video games are far too common. They have enough of that. We need to be conscious of the fact that remote streaming of our meetings opens our meetings up to everyone, children included. This means they see the good, the bad, and the ugly. Is this the way to model teamwork, compromise, and appropriate adult interaction? I think not, but they seem to be hearing and seeing a lot more inappropriate interaction between adults than they are seeing of respect, responsibility, and communication. They do not need any more examples of how not to act, so please, all of us and anyone else that attends the meetings, please, let's try to show them some respect, discussion, and understanding at these meetings. For years, people mocked Mrs. Conway and myself for saying that things like passing the school budgets were for the children. Well, this is definitely in the best interest of our children. Please let us stop the juvenile, belligerent, and disruptive behavior and language, and get back to working together to get our schools and our students on track for success. And FYI, these concerns came from some of our current high school students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Conway?
Thank you. On the follow-up to Mrs. Podolsky, I have been at the mall, at ShopRite, at various stores, have gotten texts, have gotten emails, and the one thing that keeps coming up is asking me to do something for them, and the thing that they asked me to do is to ask, could we not fight anymore? That's not the purpose of our Board of Ed. Mrs. Conway, please make them stop. My answer to them is, we can only do so much. I will ask and plead with the people to remember why we're here, what we're doing, and as a Board Member, I say it time and time again, I cannot run the district, I can only see that it is run well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mohan?
Well, thank you, Board President. So, I have several things I want to say. First and foremost, Jeannie, you're doing a fantastic job with that committee, and you have informed so many of us that are on that committee, every single step, you remind us of the meetings and we attend those meetings. We've had several meetings, even in the mayor's office, when pandemic was going on, and for anyone else to think anything other than the great job you're doing is a disservice, and it's a shame that the ETA is allowing that type of rhetoric to come and play. That's one thing. You're amazing, thank you.
Thank you, Mohan, but it's not for me, it's for the entire committee.
100%.
We're not one person, we're a group.
Correct. And on top of that, in regards to what Ms. Conway had just said, she is correct, there's so much childish behavior going on, back and forth on both sides, that they all need to be reminded of, that don't bring your politics into the board meeting and keep it in your house where you belongs. So, I want to just, hello? Sorry, hello? Yeah, so, you keep it there, and then that won't happen here, by the way. Alright? And in regards to the committee meeting notes, I'm gonna tell you, we had a Finance and Facility Committee meeting on September 20th, 2021. The meeting started at 4:00 PM. Present was Dr. Bragan, Dr. Eldorelli, myself, Mohan Patel, Jerry Shi, Ralph Barca... Present was Dr. Bragan, Dr. Eldorelli, myself, Mohan Patel, Jerry Shi, Ralph Barca, Anne Kluck, Elizabeth Conway, and Yuna Chen, Dr. Chen. Ralph Barca presented on the findings of the tech audit report by Cyberfire IT Solutions. Overall, all the, overall, the findings were very favorable with minimal points of concern. Some areas of improvement were use multi-factor authentication for login, outdated software versions on older machines, and passwords less than eight characters and compromised passwords. All these concerns have been or are being addressed by our technology department. In addition, the report listed some staffing concerns that the district plans to address via outsourcing during those times of high demand. Mr. Barca will follow up with the proposal for this in the near future. Also, representatives from DMR were present, Pradeep and Kurt, presented updates and proposals for several projects. John P. Stevens addition, which was planned for one hundred and eighty thousand square feet, thirty-two total additional classrooms, mostly likely a three-phase project, estimated cost between eighty-seven to ninety-six million and three-year until final completion. Also in talks was J.P. Stevens turf field. This is currently under review from the NGDP, the EP, and we will update the committee upon their approval. We will bring back for the presentation an ESIP that our next meeting was scheduled for on October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Dr. Bragan reported to the current status of our financial well-being of the district and that all items are currently falling within our budget projections. Most importantly, those costs related to healthcare concerns are aligned to expectations. He also reported that the only real damage to our school system that came from the recent storms was the small gym at Edison High School, which might necessitate a full replacement. We did submit an insurance claim, and we are working on determining the exact cost. Lincoln Project update was also mentioned. We do have some issues with the steel subcontractor, and in order to stay within the completion deadlines, we'll need to change the design of the gym slightly. It is anticipated that these changes will not impact the overall design or space and also not significantly increase any costs. This change is currently being reviewed by our architect and attorney. In addition, the initial plumbing contractors were changed, and the new plumber selected is a local vendor. Okay. Also, ESIR's third funds were discussed. To be aligned with the requirements of these federal monies, the seven point eight million dollars attributed to capital improvements will be designated for HVAC upgrades possibly across several projects. School bus, school bus purchases. In order to take a proactive stand regarding future transportation needs, the district is looking to secure a number of buses for the next school year, and Dr. Bragan will get anticipated prices and associated costs for review at a future meeting. And also was in talks was for our Savior's Church purchase. Prior to scheduling the closing of this property, a restriction listed in the current deed needs to be addressed, and our attorney is currently reviewing this and will keep up appraised of this status. Then our Finance and Facilities Committee meeting on Tuesday, October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, following that, four PM. It was a Zoom meeting. Present was myself, Mohan Patel, Dr. Yuna Chen, Elizabeth Conway, Jerry Shi, Anne Kluck, Dr. Eldorelli, and Dr. Bragan. This is not that long, so it's, the demographic study. Two companies presented their proposals for conducting a demographic study of the district. The companies were Statistical Forecasting and Davis Demographics. After hearing both presentations, the committee felt that the district should explore other options and solicit companies based in New Jersey. We also plan to contact our previous demographer, demagra, demographer, to review the costs for updating that information. Also in, also present for that Zoom meeting was the DMR architects. Representatives from DMR presented on the proposed addition to John P. Stevens High School, and they agreed to present at this, they present, they've agreed to present on this at a future Board of Education meeting to share the proposal with the full Board of Education and the public. We are also waiting on final approval from the Department of Environment, Department of Environmental Protection Agency for the proposed turf baseball field at John P. Stevens. So just to give you an update on that, the next meeting that we have, there will be a full presentation on the additions to J.P. Stevens in November. They also reviewed the benefits of a do-it-yourself approach to conducting an energy savings improvement program, ESIP. This can generate more savings for the district and also help update some of our HVAC systems and lighting in our schools. We will get more information as this program unfolds. Dr. Bragan, Dr. Bragan shared that the owners of the vacant property on Talmidge and Coolidge Road is no longer interested in a land lease agreement with the district and only offering a sell for approximately nine million, which we're not really agreement with. So DMR representatives proposed possible lease agreements with another buyer who could buy the property, build a school, and then lease it to the district. They will get more information on this for future, for further discussion at future meetings. Lincoln Elementary School update. Dr. Bragan updated the committee that the Lincoln addition projects is in, is on schedule in all areas with the exception of the gym, which will be delayed due to shortages and delays in securing the steel for the prefabricated building. This could push back that portion of the construction until December twenty twenty-two. However, the classrooms and the rest of the addition is still scheduled to open September twenty twenty-two. And besides this, we had our food committee meeting after six weeks in to get a better assessment as to how our vendor is doing. Normally, when you go with a new service, you don't just judge them on the first week or first two weeks, you give them some time to go through the glitches and fix whatever issues are. That's what we have done, and that's what we did when we went to the meeting. Well, actually, it was an impromptu meeting where we went. We made sure the lines were as they proposed, not what the, the, the public presented as a political point. And basically, we saw for ourselves that the food, everything was running proper. It was done in J.P. Stevens, myself, Jeannie, Shannon, and Bureau was supposed to be there. He was a bigger critic about the food, but he wasn't. So it was the three of us that went there with Dr. Bragan and the principal. And we also went to Woodrow Wilson and did the same. That, Board President, is my committee minutes.
Okay. So I think you also have plans to, we talked after the, you know, your walkthrough that some of the issues are in our elementary school.
Correct.
And you do have plans to go to the elementary school, and we do have plans to go to the South Side as well, right?
Right. So our plan is to make sure that we hit all nineteen schools and make sure everything is running as proper as it should be. So we're phasing it in little by little so we could get a better judgment as to all the schools and how they function.
Yeah, Mrs. White, you want to, you were there. Anything you want to add?
I was part of that. I, you know, I did go to J.P. Stevens, and I did go to Woodrow Wilson. And both schools, you know, it was run beautifully. The food was fresh, the, you know, the students were enjoying it. As a mother, you know, I was more or less watching the, you know, the students eating, you know, were they eating it all? Were they finishing? Were they just tossing it? They were eating everything, and as I said, the portions were generous, they were fresh, the area was clean, there were no lines, everything moves, you know, very, very smoothly. You know, I was very happy in both schools. J.P. Stevens is huge, and, and, you know, everything just was very well-run. Dr. Shalapin is, staff does a great job. And also, Woodrow Wilson, same thing, they did such a great thing. I mean, if you had the opportunity to see it, you know, these, you know, the kids were just enjoying their lunch. And they made it, you know, that they could, some of the classes could, or some of the tables could eat outside if they wanted, or they could bring it in. But the point is that they were eating everything, nothing was being taken and tossed. I mean, there was a little mishap in, at Woodrow, and the facility people were on it so fast, it was like, wow, it never happened. But, you know, it was really interesting to see, and, and I was very happy with the, you know, the way that the food service handled it and staff. And the kids are the most important, as always. Thank you.
Shannon, anything you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to add it to that, because some of the concerns were the line was being too long. I have to say that when I was in J.P., I think ten minutes after lunch started, almost nobody, no students were waiting in line. It's in Woodrow, too, like five minutes after, there's really no long lines, five minutes after lunch started. And also about the variety, I have to say, the variety compared to Charwell, which I have seen before, is much better. They have a deli station, they have hot food, cold food, all that. And the portion is, is okay, I think, compared to, at least compared to what I see before. So I'm, I'm, overall, I'm pretty happy with Marshall as the lunch provider, at least from the two schools we visited, and we are planning to visit more.
Thank you.
So, so this is the reason why I would hope that in the future, the committee meeting minutes are read based on, you know, it being placed on the agenda, because I did not get a chance to ask questions as soon as Mr. Patel was done with his finance committee minutes. And it was such a long list of things that I, since I don't have the information in front of me, I, I'm not sure if I'll be able to ask all the questions that I felt in my mind as he was speaking. So I would hope that by tomorrow, we have the, you know, the detailed minutes. But one of the questions that I do remember is, what is the purpose of this demographic study?
You want to say?
Yeah, as the minutes were shared, we, we looked at two other companies. Neither one was based in New Jersey, but we just want to get an updated and accurate information for our projected growth. We have a pretty good idea where it's going for our students that are currently in elementary, right? And what the rate is as they progress through the grades and what those numbers will be as they get to, you know, the, the middle schools and the high schools. But we'd really like to know, you know, the birth rates, the, the mobility rates, people moving in and out, and just have an outside person come in and give us that information so that we can predict what's the, the, the birth through age-five growth and projected growth over the next five years.
And the other things that, you know, sorry.
And the building.
Yeah, yeah. So the other thing that we wanted, the, the, to a new study is there were comments about the previous study, some of the township, bigger development was not included. And there were discussions about migration, you know, people migrating, you know, they come here for twelve, twelve years, and they move out. And the other thing we want them to look at is, there are a lot of new development. And of course, you know, we all know the, the famous Rutgers number, which is point three, point four per household. We are asking them to look at these new houses that people moved in and take a look at their, with our enrollment data, to get a actual Edison number instead of the standard Rutgers number. But we know for the, just for the example, for the Harding Avenue, that eight apartments, we have five families that have children in our district, and that's eight students out of those families, out of those five families. The other three, I don't know, may have kids, they're young or whatever, and that's more than point three. So those are the things that we're going to ask them to look for, to get our own quote unquote Edison number to guide us moving forward.
I mean, if you rewind back to two or three years, when the demographic study was done, I was not on the board at that point, but I was the first person to actually bring up that point, that why were the migration patterns not taken into account? So I'm glad we are doing that. And, but from what I remember, the old demographer had gone back and looked at the developments, you know, had added an addendum. So if we can look at that as well, and, you know, maybe this study can build on what we had earlier, so we don't spend another seventy or eighty thousand dollars. I think that's how much we spent in the last study. The second thing that I wanted to talk about is that, have we given up on a third high school? I mean, I mean, I've always said that, you know, adding to a massive school, we're going to reduce the overcrowding in space, but we are going to increase the overcrowding and opportunities. I mean, every school has, you know, one soccer team, one soccer captain, you know. So, so you're going to increase the crowding in clubs, you know, you're going to give students less opportunities to become presidents or to become captains of their teams, because, you know, the student body is increasing, but the number of clubs, number of teams, they're going to remain the same, so it's going to add to the competition. And if you're actually increasing the space in the school, then think about, you know, going from one room to the other. Already, it's a nightmare for students, you know, going from one part of the building to another part of the building in those limited minutes. Plus, you're not going to be able to increase the size of the hallway. So those are things to keep in mind before making that decision of adding to an existing school versus figuring out another way, you know, to get new land and to, you know, have a third school, because this is going to really be very chaotic. It's not really going to solve, and the main thing is, you know, opportunities that students get. If you're increasing the student body, you're reducing the opportunities. So that is something that, you know, we should actually keep in mind. And beyond that, I would be, I look forward to receiving the, you know, report in my email so I can ask my other questions at the next meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, you don't have to wait till the next meeting. You can send emails to me, to Mohan, to anyone, and Dr. Bragan on the committee, so we can clarify that, so you don't have to wait another month for the, for the, for the answers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you want to ask?
Just on that, Mrs. Madag, we did reach out to the previous demographer, and we're trying to get that information that you asked for, for exactly the reasons you said. That was one of the, the outcomes of the committee meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I think we are done with all the board member comments. All right, so we're going to open up for public comments. I see we have three kids here, and I'll let them go first. We have some materials they want to share with us. And thank you, guys, for, you know, waiting, and if we actually had early notice, I will put you guys earlier, but, you know, sorry if I waited an hour. But now you guys go first.
If you could just state your name and your class, if you want, that's fine, too.
Hi, my name is Aryan Singh. I go to John P. Stevens High School, and I'm in the class of twenty twenty-three.
Hi, my name is Ishika Srivastava. I go to John P. Stevens High School, and I'm in the class of twenty twenty-three.
My name is, hi, my name is Tanmei Joshi. I'm in J.P. Stevens, and I'm in the class of twenty twenty-three.
Hello, everyone. Before we'd like to start off our presentation, we'd like to thank the Board of Education to give us this opportunity to come and present the Students of the Year Program, which is organized by the LLS Leukemia and Lymphoma Organization. And we'd like to also thank Mr. Mohan Patel for giving us this, this, this platform to express our opinion. We'd also like to thank my co-candidates, Tanmei and Ishika, for their support. And we'd also like to thank, yeah, that's it. So we'd like to go into depth with our three, our three components for today's meeting. Our three components will be the context and background information on the LLS, the Students of the Year Program, as well as our ask to the Edison Board. So to give some context on the LLS, the LLS's main mission is to cure leukemia, lymphoma, Hodgkin's disease, and myeloma, as well as improving the quality of life for their patients and their families through three distinct components, which are research, access, and advocacy. In terms of research, they've invested nearly one point three billion dollars in cancer research since nineteen forty-nine. In terms of education, they provided free educational resources for their patients. And in terms of advocacy, more than a hundred thousand individuals across America have experienced and have volunteered within this organization. Their impact. So LLS has funded fifty-five out of the sixty-five FDA-approved treatments since twenty seventeen, and their COVID-nineteen patient financial aid program has provided more than four point eight million dollars in assistance to over nineteen thousand blood cancer patients. In addition, they funded more than sixty percent of those therapies. After giving you a broad context, after the LLS context and background information, we'd like to move into the Students of the Year Program. The Students of the Year Program is a philanthropic leadership developmental program for high school students, and it is a seven-week challenge to raise funds for LLS in honor of young local blood cancer survivors known as honored heroes. Candidates utilize professional skills which they learn through this program, such as marketing, entrepreneurship, project management, presentational skills, financial literacy, and communications and network. For instance, the winning team of last year's Students of the Year campaign fundraised six hundred thousand dollars, and through that six hundred thousand dollars, a majority of it was the team networking, communicating with other organizations and businesses which were local to them. They use these professional skills, such as marketing, entrepreneurship, project management, and presentational skills, to help these organizations and businesses help fund them for this campaign. After giving you a breakdown of our second segment, we'd like to now move on to the third segment, which is our ask to the Edison Board. We have an immediate ask to the Edison Board that through their help, we can establish sort of a that through their help, we can establish sort of a institution within both high schools, JP Stevens and Edison High School, where through administration, principals, student-led government, such as Student Council, we help establish this club to help the Students of the Year Campaign. From a long-term perspective, we'd like the Board to help us contact, communicate, and network with other boards outside of Edison, such as the Cranford, Piscataway, and other New Jersey boards to help us expand the Students of the Year Program as a whole across all of New Jersey. In conclusion, that concludes our presentation. And I'd now open the floor for questions. Once again, thank you so much for your time and giving us this platform to give our presentation. Thank you.
Before we actually open questions, I'd like to thank three of you for coming here to present this. And it is the students like you guys are making Edison proud. Right? Your high school, you're doing this. And, um, you know, I hope someday one of you guys will be a researcher or find a cure for leukemia. Right? Thank you very much. So now I'll open up for any board members. Uh, you have any questions, Dr. Bragan? What can we do to help you guys?
Quick question, Arien. Uh, in regards to this program, how, if one wants to know more about it, how can they reach out to you? Or how can they get more information?
Um, inside the presentation, I've actually linked the email and phone number to one of our representatives. Her name is Tess. Unfortunately, she was unable to be here today. But her email and phone number is there in case you have any questions. In terms of contacting me, my email is, personal email is asign91505@gmail.com. My school email is 3017684@edison.k12 nj.us. Yeah, also information on the website.
Yeah, I see you, you have YouTube, but unfortunately, well, we got this one late. Otherwise, we'll set it up so you guys can play. I'm pretty sure that the YouTube videos will be very, uh, very, very good video to, you know, for the program. Um, so you, basically you're asking is to set up two clubs for the, the two high schools. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, Dr. Bragan, anything that?
Yeah, just to echo what the board member said and Board President Shi. You know, we're proud of you guys for taking this initiative and getting in front of everybody and presenting your cause. It's a noble cause to begin with. So I do hope, as Mr. Shi said, want to use, maybe we'll be a researcher that, you know, ends this terrible disease. Do me a favor. Reach out to me personally via email with this PowerPoint and with your names attached. And we'll follow up. We'll follow up as we would through the building principals about the process for putting together the club. It's a noble cause and we'll do what we can to support it.
All right, thank you.
And also you mentioned with the other school board, uh, I actually am on the, uh, email group with all the other district school board presidents. So if you can just copy me on the email to Dr. Bragan, and I'll be more than happy to share what you have with all the other board president in the Middlesex County area.
All right, thank you so much.
Can I just say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to thank all three of you for coming out and speaking up and putting a spotlight on this dreadful, dreadful disease. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for your comments.
All right. Thank you, guys. If you want to go home, do your homework, feel free. All right. All right. Now we are open for other members to, uh, you know, for comments. Yes, Venkatesh. Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you, Jerry, not making me wait for two more hours. And good evening, everyone. Dr. Bragan, thank you for acknowledging that you could have taken the call earlier. And, you know, we acknowledge that. And I think we truly appreciate and understand that your intent was right. And these are the things that will teach us. And obviously, there was a lot of panic mode in the morning. So we have to, you know, wake up some of your BOE members, texting them, do you have any information? Do you have any information? So obviously, they all say that we are not poking our nose into the operations. We are letting Dr. Bragan handle the stuff. So I thank Jerry and Shivie for stepping up in the morning at 6:30 and responding to the parents. So I think that's great. And I have five items to talk. I hope I'll remember one by one. Number one, Dr. Bragan, about the clubs that elementary and middle school, they used to be more than one. And this time they were limited to only one. And I think if the middle school kids don't experience two clubs and restrict them only one, by the time they come to high school, they will not be able to have enough choices to pick it up. I think I seriously request you guys to look at more than one club for those middle schoolers, especially, I can refer to John Adams. Mostly, 90% people got only one club. The second thing is about the tardiness. I think between the class to class, there is only four minutes. And today morning, when we dropped my kid, her socks was wet. I don't know how she managed the whole day. I think a lot of socks were stinking, stinking because of the rain. But obviously, you know, there should be some dryers that you need to think when the rain is coming, that people should be able to have a dryer, like corporate officers has dryers. So you guys can think of, if it is expensive, then we, as the parents, are willing to volunteer them for our respective schools. Number three, when the water was contaminated, I should thank Dr. Valentine that we offered around 30 to 40 cases of water. She said that she doesn't need that water. She has emergency backup. And Jerry responded stating that superend is ahead, so we don't need the water. But surprisingly, we have seen JP Stevens PTO is telling, oh, we are donating some water. Do you guys want? If you want to donate, go and drop them at the school. I don't want my kid to be given the water donated by somebody else. I would rather give the money to the school so that you guys can procure. Because you don't know what kind of anti elements will drop, what kind of water. So I think, please advise those PTOs that they should not collect from wherever they're unknown people. So I think it has to be properly procured. And another parent has concern that they consumed all those excused absences. So is there any possibility of increasing one or two of excused limit, absences limit? So that would help some of these parents during the pandemic. And the last one is the four-minute study thing. In the middle school, one teacher was very strict that my daughter has to walk from all the way from one building corner to this building corner. And lot of hallway traffic. And if you are not there in your seat, I think she attended, she was in the class. When the teacher called the name, she said, yes, I am present. The teacher said, no, you're not in your seat. So we are marking tardy. I think that has to be fixed because, you know, we couldn't address our workthording. We couldn't fix those things. So if the kid is not in the school in the chair in one minute late, and now I formally want to request, is there a way to either increase that forgiveness or increase that to five minutes? So I'm not saying, or at least the punishments. Kids are punished, kids are feeling uncomings saying that, oh, I may get detention if I have more than three tardies in the class to class. I think I would leave up to your, you know, expertise to take that call. And, uh, Mr. Jerry, I regret and apologize for the outburst for the last week. You, it's not one day thing. Ever since I announced myself as a Republican, been harassed, been passing comments, sitting right here making the passing comments, it bubbles up. Being a minority means minority, not as an Indian. Being a minority as a Republican in this town, we have to go through lot of stuff. I'm still proud of Republican. I don't care what others say. I 90% times bring it. I think two years back, I lost my emotional burst and it happened last week. I think I regret it. We'll try to fix it. But I also thank, you know, Virginia White, that I don't know what that committee before last year, but after you took it over, it's been running great. If anybody says anything, because of you, that committee got a good name. And Carol, I truly appreciate your comment about kids are watching. I just want to ask you one question if you can respond. Are you proud of your colleagues, the kind of ethical charges, the kind of endorsements to the politicians? BOE should be non-partition. You guys are not behaving like adults, too. I think your team is, should be ashamed first for bragging this darkness to this, doing the ethical charges all over newspapers, one member helping another member. I think this, there is a limit for this. I think you need to self-respect. Are we doing justice as a BOE members before one outburst of a member? I, I will continue to fight with that person as a Republican versus Democrat, but BOE leaders has to be the example. And I don't think, not many people that I will see over here. If you can answer that, if you are proud of your team, I would like to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Venkatesh, on the things that you mentioned, we will take all those under consideration and look at providing the solutions that you suggested when we can. We'll do what we can to, you know, those five items related to the school. We'll take a hard look at those and we'll do what we can to best serve the community. Thank you.
Yes, the lady. Yeah, she's there. Well, you're, you're next, Maria. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, board members.
Name, name and?
My name is Damaris. And I'm here to speak on behalf of my niece, who is a freshman here at Edison High School. On September 28, 2021.
Take your time, take your time.
My niece was set up and assaulted in the Edison girls' bathroom. While she was punched and thrown on the ground floor, seven other girls were recording with their cell phones. After the girl stopped, my niece picked up her hairnet from the floor and was finally able to walk out. Though the recording was, were uploaded to TikTok and Snapchat. While waiting at the nurse without an ice pack, she called her mother from her cellphone and told her what happened. She was suspended for 10 days because apparently she started the fight. She was taken to the ER where it was determined that she had a concussion. You will think this is it, but no. Her incident started in middle school where she was slapped while riding the bus home and harassed and assaulted inside school by the same boy. Then at the beginning of September of this year, she complained about being bullied by the same boy and some girls, which resulted in her cutting herself, her arms. Her mother is currently paying for therapy since then. I reached out to the New Jersey Horizon Intimidation Bullying Department. And I will read what they emailed me, quote, "Each district board, Board of Education member is required to implement a code of student conduct that establishes the standards, policies, and procedures for positive student development, as well as the behavioral expectation of students' development. As well as the behavioral expectation of students. Furthermore, school districts are required to implement harassment, intimidation, and bullying policies to support the prevention, remediation, and reporting of HIV within schools in alignment with New Jersey Anti-Bullying New Jersey Law." Not only were her bullying rights violated, but also her civil and disability rights. Until this day, my niece has an expired IEP, IEP, which expired on October 2, 2021. Her mother signed papers for home instructions since this school district is not safe and she continues to get cyberbullying. We want her out of this school district and want her services for which she is entitled to, to continue. We are trying to keep my niece alive. And I just hope that the next bullying situation be giving us the respect and consideration that it needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Maria. I just want to comment on that. Obviously, we can't speak to individual student issues. And I, um, it hurts me to hear the pain and the trouble that your niece is going through. I would like to set up a meeting with you, if that's appropriate, if you contact our office, so you and I could talk a little more freely about what we can do to help your, your niece. And if, um, please reach out to my office via email or call tomorrow and we'll try to set it up ASAP. It's not a place to talk about that in public, though. But thank you.
Thank you. Maria.
Hi, Maria Orchid, 83 Jefferson. My first request is any students, we need student representatives for the Environmental Club and the Green Team Club. We'd like to thank all the volunteers that came out for the Boat Basin. The previous Saturday, we had 55 volunteers. Saturday, October 30, 2021, we're going to have a trunk or treat from 9:30 to 12:30, hopefully, please. The weather's good at Lake Papiani. We're going to have a costume contest, free raffles, and touch a trunk. So we're looking forward to, everybody is invited to come. And we look forward to seeing all the families. On another note, just a reminder that the open space gives echo tours, which are fabulous. Unfortunately, the next tours will be on Sunday, November 14, November 21, and November 28. Please drive safe. I know the weather sometime is a little unsafe. Please listen to the security, security guards. They're doing their best. And we need more crossing guards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Patty.
Good evening, Dr. Bragan and board members. Padmaja Chinta from Edison. I want to note that I appreciate the comments about decorum made by some of the board members because I think that is so important. Along those same lines, I wanted to add another comment. I know it's election season and there's a lot of chatter that's happening online, but I am actually shocked at some of the caustic language that is being used or encouraged on some of the social media WhatsApp groups by some of the elected officials. I understand that elected officials are allowed to have personal opinions, but please appreciate that when you speak online, whether you like it or not, whether you want it or not, it is perceived as coming from a board member and comes across as petty and frankly, unbecoming of the office that you hold. So I urge the board leadership to please set the right tone or at least correct the tone and uphold the dignity of the office, regardless of who you may support or who may end up winning. Personally, I think it's great that so many candidates are running, are interested in running and wanting to help. And I wish good luck to every one of them. I also have a quick question about transportation. I think it was maybe a couple of meetings ago when we were told that the issues relating to free busing would be taken care of and then district would look into subscription busing. But seems like some parents are still having issues with the free busing. So I wanted to ask if you could please share how many routes of free busing are still impacted? How many routes of subscription busing are still impacted? And what, when can we expect a resolution by? Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Regarding the transportation, my understanding is the free routes are, all those students are being transported right now. If there's an individual that, that, that's not true for, please have them contact me directly. Um, that's my understanding and it's been that way for, I think, two weeks now. But have them contact me. If there's somebody that's missed or they perceive that they're entitled to transportation and not getting it, let me know. As far as the subscription routes, it's not necessarily routes per se. It's subscription applications. And I'll try to get that exact number. At our caucus meeting, we mentioned it was about 1,500 applications that were still outstanding. But they're not necessarily routes because most of those students are on already existing routes when we place the child on a, on a bus route that's going past their house, but they're within the two, two-mile limit for secondary, two and a half miles for elementary. But I will get an update on that status as far as where we are with that. We have a new, um, transportation supervisor who started this week. And we're encouraged by his enthusiasm for the position. And we've already been giving him, giving him the task to reduce those subscription applications as quickly as possible. to reduce those subscription applications as quickly as he can. But I will give an update on that number.
Thank you. Yes, Joyce.
Jurisdiction forty-one, Main Street, Edison, New Jersey. What I would like to, is second what the two retired teachers said about the Board of Ed meetings. I'm getting a lot of feedback from students and from people about the decorum. They think, and people say a Piccadilly Circus and they say all this information. When I get up and I speak at all, I can speak without throwing digs at people because I, I witnessed this tonight. After the two of you so eloquently said how we should act and how we should perform because our children are watching us at all times. We have very intelligent children in Edison and they understand because in my history classes, we did debate. And then when you debate an issue, you discuss it on both sides. You don't call people names, even if you don't agree with them. There's a certain thing that you do. We can agree to disagree without acting like children and acting ridiculous at all. And I want Jenny to also know, no good deed goes unpunished. And what I like about Jenny, if Jenny has something to say, Jenny calls me personally. She doesn't try to put on a show here at the board, okay? Most of the time when people are screaming, it's political or whatever, it actually gets on my nerves being a person that has been in education for over forty-two years. And prior to this board and other places, we had groups such as strategic planning. We did strategic planning, which that, it consisted of the neighborhood people, the technological people. We had everybody together, sitting, discussing, and moving us forward. And that's the type of stuff that we need to go back to. We need to stop being a baby. If it's not my idea, then we're not gonna move it forward. And also about getting a new school, that is very important because within a school, you can just keep adding and adding more rooms on, adding more rooms, adding more rooms. But the quality of air and amount of space that you have in a hallway, if you're not widening the halls, the school, the school still becomes crowded. So, and then the opportunities and the chances that I have that if I'm competing against maybe a thousand kids for that, then I turn around competing against two thousand kids for that same position. You know, it holds me back when scholarships and different other things, they're very important with my life later on. So that's something we still, we don't need to put that on the back burner at all. And then as I discussed with some other people about filtration, I came from the school district, the schools was old, so they had a filtration system in it. The reason why I talk about strategic planning, because these are things that you probably would discuss, the air quality, making a filter, because the more minds you have, the more great minds you have together and that are not selfish, you can just make stuff better. And my whole interest is to make sure that we stay better, to make sure we stay in the top twenty-five or so schools. I want to, I want us to keep that going. So as far as other people have come and told me, they said, boy, are they disrespectful to you when you come to the meetings? Some people say, oh, Joyce, don't go back, they're so disrespectful. But as I say, no, I'm, I'm going back because I want you to see that maybe there will be a change in behavior. Maybe people will actually show by example that they are a public servant. And no matter what, no matter who says what to you as a public servant, as long as they don't call you out of your name, you're supposed to be the person with decorum and that's what you were elected for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, President, if I could just say something.
Sure.
I want to actually thank Joyce for bringing up something that was in my mind and you basically said my points exactly. Thank you so much for bringing all that information here about the filtration system and so forth. Those were agenda points that are going to be in our next Finance and Facilities meeting. I thank you for bringing that to the attention of the board again. And you're right, we should all work together. This is a village and we have to make sure our kids are taken care of and thank you.
Rich Swinney, does it tell my address still? No? Okay. I'm trying to find out on, by John Marshall, who owns the property adjacent from the school where this little green building is. I've been to four council meetings and tomorrow I'll be asking it again. And it's a disgusting building for our children. I don't have any kids in the district. This is the first time I'm in this building since my kids went through the, through the school system. They're forty now, but the thing is, I'm trying to get that building to look presentable for the kids coming out of school every day. It's disgusting. It hasn't been painted in forty years. And it's just horrible. It's a horrible looking building. And I'm just trying to find out who owns the property, whether it's the town, whether it's the Board of Education. And really, I've been to four council meetings, the first time I'm here at this. But another reason I, I'd like to compliment the principal at John Marshall School. She goes way beyond her, her call of duty. They were, when they were milling the roads and there was no crossing guard out there, she was out there. I'm saying, is that in your job description? No, she's out there. I mean, she, she, she really cares about the kids at John Marshall School. I don't even know her name. I talk to her maybe once a week, at least when she's leaving at nine o'clock at night. You know, and I'm saying, are we getting overtime? I'm looking at my watch and... But I'm telling you, she really cares for those kids and she, she's a very good, uh, person for the principal of that school. It's amazing. I mean, even when they were doing the sewer lines on Sutton's Lane, she was out there in the snow. She was out there. I don't think that's in her job description, you know? But I make fun of her saying it, you know? There was something else, you know, but age, you start to lose your memory a little bit. There was something else I wanted to talk about. I was at a board meeting over on, I guess it's Pearson Road, Pearson, whatever. And I asked about one way through John Marshall School. Because now with COVID, people aren't putting their kids on the bus and that traffic is a mess. And now even proves more it, you need a one-way, you know? I'm, I'm almost sure some of them, most of them kids are late for school. But everybody's late for school because of the overcrowding. I believe that we need schools in this town. Like I said, I have no children in this town, in this school. It was overcrowded when they were in school in the nineties or whatever it was. But we need schools in this town. And I, I hope that people in this town wake up and vote yes for schools because, you know, you're gonna complain that your kids can't get to class, your kids can't, ba, ba, ba. I went to the orientations with the architects, we're doing the presentation. And when I seen those kids in high school in the hallways, I'm telling you, especially with COVID and diseases and every, it's not a good thing. It's not a healthy thing, you know? I'm, I'm the first one. I'll vote yes, you know, even if my taxes go up. Because my kids went through the system and the thing is, they're doing pretty good today. Thanks, Edison. Thank you.
Thank you. So just want to clarify, you said if I'm facing Marshall, which side of the building is the house you're talking about?
If you're facing, if you're John Marshall?
Yeah.
It's direct, it's directly across.
Across, okay.
Yeah, I mean, stop by and look at this building. I don't want to get in, I, I was at the last council meeting because if it wasn't painted in forty years, pre nineteen seventy-four, there's led paint on that building. And it's a health issue because you got latchy kids playing there after, after, I don't know about now, but they play over there and everything else. It, it has to be, something has to be done with it, even if they knock it down. Because I haven't seen anybody in it except rodents and groundhogs and cats. So, you know, I just think it's, but the one-way, that one-way, you, you need that one-way down at John Marshall School. It, it's, you know, one way in, one way out. It's, it's horrible. Because eventually there's gonna be an accident there because some people speed down the road even though they, you know, the signs are there and don't enter here, two signs. People come down that road, the crossing guards try to stop them, but they go anyway, you know? The previous crossing guard by the name of Ed, his name was Ed, moved to Florida, but he used to stop them. He was, he should have been an Edison cop, really, but anyway. And that, the thing with crossing guards, they gotta pay him more money. They gotta pay him more money. You're paying cops sixty dollars or whatever an hour, they're paying them nine and twelve dollars an hour. That's, that's the game, you know? I think I, I'm retired five years now. If the money was better, I would probably go out my front door into the crosswalk and be a crossing guard. I've been called curse words because the crossing guard wasn't there, the police weren't notified, I was out playing crossing guard. And some of the names I was called with the traffic and I don't want to tell you what I said back to them because it's not appropriate in this forum, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, first I want to say, a guy that looks as young as you, I can't believe you have kids in your fort, in their forties. But anyway.
I can't believe I'm retired five years already. But I, I, Dr. Reagan, I, I really respect you because at one point where you went into your own pockets for some money, you gained my respect. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time too to recognize Mrs. Hoffman for the great job she does. You know, she exemplifies what a lot of our principals do, right? They own the place, they own the building, they do what they can for kids. So thank you for that. I'm gonna ask Dr. Alderelli, who's in the office, in the audience here, before you leave, to get your contact information. I'll find out for tomorrow who owns that building. If it's on our property, I'll run it by the board and if there's something we could do, we'll do it ASAP. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. Just want to add what you mentioned about, you know, the principals and the staff. Today, actually, we received a video from a parent. And it was a forty minute, a forty-second clip of the James Monroe School. The teachers were outside directing the traffic, helping the kids to get out of the car, to get into the building right away. So, you know, really appreciate all the staff to go in beyond what are their job descriptions, okay? So, you know, just like Dr. Reagan said, they own the building. Yeah, so they're, they're, they're doing a good job. Really appreciate, you know, all the staffs that go, you know, way beyond. That's what, that's what Shionne Bright Addison, that's what they do, right? So Crystal. Well, you, you can't, you can't, I'm sorry, you're sorry. You can come back later. I'm sorry. You can come back later. That's, that's a, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Why are you asking people for their names, Jerry? You don't have to give your name, concerned citizen in New Jersey. Can I convey, my time started? Hey, Boral, how you doing? So, Boral, you made a statement in the newspaper. "Is it not ironic that someone with their alleged involvement in the racist flyer has filed this complaint against me during election year?" Patel asked. Who are you talking about? Are you talking about Jerry? I also filed a complaint against you as well. "This is nothing but election time shenanigans that have become too much common in Edison. I am completely confident..."
Crystal, can you just put the mic a little closer to you, please? Thank you.
Anytime. I am completely con, I'll start over. "This is nothing but election time shenanigans that have become too much common in Edison. I am completely confident the truth will prevail and the outcome of these frivolous complaints will be in my favor," Patel added. Personally, I think the complaints Tony put on you, Jerry, are frivolous, but I put a complaint on you. When's your response gonna come out? Is that gonna go in the newspaper? Not gonna go in the newspaper? Is it because my ethics complaint's a very serious complaint? Did the mayor of Midtutchen, Bush, tell you not to comment? Conway, Ms. Conway, you declined to comment on the matter. I would like to hear you comment one of these days. Jerry Shi, when I was, uh, the last time I was, uh, I think it was the primary over at the election booth, someone came up to me, they're like, hey, did you know Jerry Shi doesn't pay his water bills? I don't know about that, but I can still ask the question. Hey, Jerry, do you pay your water bills?
Absolutely.
You pay your water bill? Now I'm gonna check it because you said absolutely.
Absolutely.
I believe the guy, though.
That's your problem, that's your problem.
I think he's more honest than you. I'm just saying, all right? Stop using decorum as an excuse to censor the public and trick them into surrendering their civil rights. Still a public meeting, you know? I don't know many children that just stay up at night to watch these things. It's always, always usually an excuse to say to someone, hey, whatever. But are we also gonna be telling the government officials who come to this meeting? I'm Tony D., library board member, who comes to these meetings, always acts violent with members of the community, screams at members of the community that he disagrees with. That's who Mayor Lanky and Sam Joshi endorsed. And I want the public, every time he comes in this meeting and acts up, I want them to know this is Sam Joshi's leadership. This is the leadership of Edison, New Jersey. So, no show, Boral Patel. You weren't at the food meeting. Your friend, the Board of Education Zero Integrity, Daniel Harris, and the corrupt Woodbridge Board of Education chose to give rotten food to the students. My question is, is that the same rotten food that they were trying to tell you guys to vote yes over here? That's what you were, you were voting over here on, Boral? Did Mayor McCormick tell you to give the kids rotten food over here in Edison? Did Kevin McCabe tell you to, uh, go to that special vendor? Why were you telling members of the public that he was going for special interest groups? This is no politics here. You didn't see the newspaper article about Woodbridge giving people rotten food? Why was Woodbridge giving people rotten food? Why does it happen to be the same people giving out rotten food? Boral Patel was supporting the same vendor at a parade, at the same parade that sent out the racist flyers threatening to deport Indian and Chinese people. Do you have no shame, Boral? Have no shame at all? This is the same vendor that Boral wanted here? Chart Wells is the same one in Woodbridge? That's the one that he wanted here? Okay. So I don't know the name of it exactly. I do know it's the same one. I do believe it's the same one, Boral. Childish behavior, most, most of childish behavior I see, it always comes from the public officials. Never comes from members of the public. Members of the public can't really be childish at their own meeting. This is our meeting to come and address our own issues. I really want to know why, why Sam Joshi sends his political operatives in here to promote certain agendas against other agendas? I want to know why Tony D. comes in here and he's so violent with the Republicans coming into this meeting. We come to this meeting, we love everybody, you know, we're such peaceful people, you know? We promote peace and prosperity throughout the world and he comes here very violent. I'm almost afraid to come here, Jerry. I'm almost, I fear, that's why I got my body camera on. So this way, when he lashes out, I can record it. It's all right, I got twenty-six seconds because I'm gonna come back up for my rebuttal. Boral, I want you to answer that. Why were you promoting the same vendor as Woodbridge that's giving out the rotten food? Is that because that's the vendor, the, the chosen vendor of the Middlesex County Democratic Organization? Are you ever gonna stand with the students and the parents? Are you always gonna do what your political party tells you to do, even if it's against the best interests of the students and the taxpayers? I'll be back up, Boral. I want my questions answered too, and I want my question answered if that's the same vendor he was supporting is the same one in Woodbridge giving rotten food.
Time is up, my friend. Okay? I saw someone over there. Yeah, Tony.
Tony, Piscopo, Pine Street. So I respect a hundred percent what was said about the fighting back and forth and yes, that, that shouldn't happen, but I, I really would put that, you know, the residents come here and all of us, not just myself, but we come and speak and we come and speak where, where we feel things are not correct and things are, are correct. And I just want to read a little segment out of an article here. Politicians were put in power by you and me, our vote. While it's a legislator's job to represent the people of their communities, it's our job to remind them of their accountability. Political lobbyists, personal interests, reelection campaigns, among others, are often reasons our representatives may sway from their original promises. By staying active in the political process after elections, checking in and keeping tabs is how we can hold our elected officials accountable. So, um, you know, the residents that do come up and speak, our job is to keep you all accountable because we put you in- our job is to keep you all accountable because we put you in here, our vote, which is one of the most powerful things that a citizen of the United States can do. And reasons we have to hold you all accountable are comments like this. When I asked Mr. Shi about the issue with Mr. Bureau Patel. And I asked where the proof was, and his response was, ask for the interview transcripts from the investigators. All board members have Dr. Brigant's statements as well. Now, key on this last statement here. I'm pretty sure some of your board member friends on the board will slip that to you. So, Mr. Shi, which ones on here are going to slip me information which will be unethical? You are suggesting that board members should be unethically giving me information? See, this is why we need to keep you accountable and the board members. Another, another comment here from Mr. Mohan Patel. Looks like there's a bunch of former, current PTOs, PTA's, collaborates in this picture, standing with a politician next to a sham artist. Just makes you want to think why they sling so much menorah around. I guess it just makes you want to think why they say, I guess when you surround yourself with BS artists, you're bound to be rolling in it and splashing it. This is what a board member is saying about PTO leaders, which directly affect our kids. Mr. Shi, you attacked the ETA today, okay? You attacked them online. How about if you just went and talked to Jeff yourself instead of making a big circus? But I think that's what you like to do, is make everything a big circus, just to prove your point that you're always right. So, yes, it is our job to keep you all accountable, to let the public know what is going on. That's our jobs. And if anybody feels that they want to stifle what the citizens and residents of this country and this town can do, you're not going to. I'm telling you right now. And if any citizen is feeling stifled, then you know what? They should stand up against all the politicians that are making them feel stifled because, again, it is our job to keep you all accountable. Yes, working together is fantastic. We should all work together. But unfortunately, there's other powers and other influences that will change that. And as far as decorum, I just want to bring up in the past also a Board of Ed meeting, I think it was two years ago, where Mr. Patel was not on the board at that point. And it was an extension of Dr. Brigant's contract. And yes, it was extended. And Mr. Patel, at that point, ran out of the auditorium and slammed the door. Just a few months ago, or two, two, three meetings ago. He runs out cursing. So, talking about decorum, let's not be hypocritical when we say, as he's doing right now, making motions because he can't just stand there and just take it. That's understandable. And also, Mr. Shi, yes, the resident last week who decided to make vulgar comments about me, you just let it go. You even laughed about it. Yes, it's on the recording that you laughed, okay? So, yes, my feelings were not hurt by any of the comments. But it just shows your leadership that you pick and choose who you allow to speak about what. So, it just shows your true colors. And no, I'm not attacking you. I am just exposing what the truth is and what's happening at these meetings. If you feel that as an attack, then I'm sorry. But again, as a resident, we see things and we need to speak up about it. And that's what we need to do, and that's what I will continue to do at every board meeting and any other council meeting that I attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Board President Shi, I would like to address, since you brought up my name.
Yeah.
Okay. Tony, you're full of it, and that's what I'm going to say. You're full of it, and you continue to bring it onto the board. You waste people's time, you waste the board members' time, you waste the students' time with your nonsense. You bring your politics every single time in this board meeting, and I'm sick of it, as well as other people. So, you can keep on with your rants every time you come here, question us, whatever you want, that's fine. I have no problem. But next time, when you read out, make sure it's louder so people can hear what I said. And it's not about all PTOs, PTA's, or PTSOs. It's about the picture with the ones that were there, not every single one of them, just those that were pictured. So, they know who they are. Thank you.
Charles Ross, Principal Edison High School. Just want to shout out some good things going on here at the high later this week. I know that Dr. Brigant has already reserved his tickets. I believe another couple of board members have, Ms. Conway. The drama department is back in full effect. We're going to have, in time for spooky season, the classic play, Arsenic and Old Lace. The set's right behind you. That's why we have you guys down in the pit. There's going to be a show Thursday night at 6:30, a show Friday night at 6:30. And then we've got a matinee at 2 on Saturday. And then a, the last show of the run will be at Saturday at 7 here. You can get tickets at the door. If you want to contact the director, Maureen O'Connor, you can also contact her. It's going to be a great time. It's just good so many times to have these kids out in these positive experiences and everybody coming together as a community. And also coming together as a community, this Monday, Edison High School Boys Soccer Team has had a great season, is going to be playing the Hawks of J.P. Stevens in the first round of the state tournament. So, I'd love to have everybody come out here to the Matthew J. Droll Stadium and support the Eagles or the Hawks, whatever your preference. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Charlie, and I forgot my, yeah.
Could he repeat when the soccer game is?
Oh, can you repeat what the soccer game is?
Sorry, those, those people who have my phone calls know that I kind of speak rapidly. Soccer game will be Monday after school, on the field, at the Matthew J. Droll Stadium here, Edison versus JP.
Thank you. So, thank you for bringing that up. I forgot that. That was something I want to say.
What time is that?
You said right after school. What time is that?
Tuesday, 4.
It's true. Yeah, true. So, since you brought that up, I forgot to say something. The, I just want to say, the Edison Girls Volleyball Team, they made to the county final at Obridge. And, you know, I don't know how do they do at the, you know, against East Brunswick. I hope that they win. So, and the other thing is JP Stevens Band, they participated in the competition last weekend, and they won all the top prizes. And I think they scored 92 points. That's pretty high. And for someone who has been involved in the, in the band program, 92 points is very, very high score. Congratulations to the Edison, to the JP Stevens Volleyball Team and the JP Stevens Marching Hawks. Okay, any first timers? Yes?
Hi. My name is Roya Rafi. I live on Third Street. I just had a question about a resolution on the agenda.
Okay.
The emergency virtual instruction plan, is that, what is that about? Is that going to be for like days like today? Or is it, are we going to, do you expect that we're going to be going to virtual learning again?
Okay, do you have any other questions? That's it? Okay. All right, Dr. Brigant.
Yeah, great question. That plan is required by the State Department of Education, and we had to put in place. Should, I'm thinking their idea was should the pandemic resurface and all schools have to be closed for a period of time, that we have to have a plan in place. Right now, no virtual instruction is approved unless the emergency's been declared and it's for a three-day duration or longer. So, that's really for, should something rise to the level like it did in March and April of 2020, when all schools have to close, they want to make sure that we have a plan in place that we could easily transition. And I mentioned at the caucus meeting on board, our school district has really proven that they can do that, and we do have the one-to-one devices and the capability to do that. So, it's really there in case that emergency presents itself again and the governor declares that all schools will have to be remote for a period of time.
So, is there a way we can see that plan somewhere?
Yeah, it'll be on the website. It has to get board approved first, then we're going to submit it to the DOE, and then it'll be on the website. It might be a part of the agenda now, but I'll make sure it's up there tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do any other first timers? You're not a first timer. Yeah, yeah. Do any first timers? All right, none? Okay. Thank you.
I didn't want to come here second time, but I think a lot many people. I hope our councilwoman look at the decorum in the council thing. The mayoral candidate, the vice president stalling the stuff, I hope she would condemn that. And the second thing is, this is a cohort, conspiracy. You know, they sit separately, they text each other, they show it to each other. This is how they suppress. The person who came here used to attack a Chinese director in the library board. And once the Chinese director was kicked out by the so-called VP of Council, then he never showed up. What happened, guess what? In six months, he was awarded a nominated post in the library. Do you see the under, you know, the kind of things that go here undercurrent? Conspiracy. They text each other, they sit separately, they communicate well. They talk to the people in the BOE there. I see the people who are responding there. I think this is where the decorum comes. And Joyce, I had a lot of respect for her. And if she's going to talk of one incident of decorum, is she proud of the BOE people accusing of the conspiracy and giving the jobs thrown away? Is it between the teachers only? Normal people cannot get their teacher jobs? I think she needs to answer that question before she does it. I think that social media communication, he said, right? The same person who said it, said to you, Jerry, that you're going to lose your majority. He knows it. I don't know, are they rigging it? Are they doing anything? They want to kick you out? He is very confident when he said on the social media that you're losing your thing, you're done for the rest of it. A BOE member is threatening the superdent, saying that next time I'm going to get, Jerry's going to be out, Mohan is going to be out. Is this the decorum that our people are expecting it? I'm an honest guy. I'm a stride forward guy. I don't make a single penny. I pay my kid in the private, private schools for more than $50,000 per year because of this situation. I come here with a pain. These people are still enjoying the Edison School $15,000, $17,000. I'm paying $50,000 outside in the private school for my kid. I'm not making my kid studying in this high school. I hope the decorum meaning is something not what I say, the inside, the conspiracy, the collusion. I think this town is rotten with the democratic collusion. EDO, MCDU, I don't care. Me being a Democrat, I am stride forward. I talk the way what I feel it. I don't know how to talk the way that Joyce wanted me to talk. But I think Joyce, I expect her to respect that what we say, rather than saying, can she talk about our council corruption? How many people are corrupted in the council there? I think the decorum needs to be there. I want to send my kid to the budget meetings of council. That is not happening. Sorry to come here, but I have to point out for an elected member. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Crystal.
I want to talk about what Tony said. Tony mentioned something that you said in the WhatsApp group. You insinuated what we all know all along, BOE members slipping Tony deinformation. That's nothing new. I believe. Who, who, who are you talking about? Boral? Could it be Shi Vi? Could it be someone else? Boral, you constantly talk about BOE members. Is that an unethical thing? Can I take screenshots every time he did that and file an ethics complaint? Each and every time he accused a BOE member of doing something that they weren't doing? As opposed to Tony, Tony D. Pascal, always coming here, library board, they put him on the library board. It's a good thing that Vinketta put that out. They all used to go to the meetings, the Han people, the Joshi people. They all used to harass either Shannon, David, the Chinese library director. They harassed every Chinese public official. And look at you, Jerry. You sold out your own community. How did you sell out your own community? Tony said, he said, I'm not allowed, I can say whatever I want. It's a public meeting. He was upset because I mentioned, oh, Tony being under the desk of a Sam Joshi. I'm going to accuse you now, Jerry. I accuse you being under the desk of Han. Shame on you. You know, both these groups attacked the Chinese community, and yet, what do you do? You bow down to them? It just goes to show the weak leadership, the hypocrisy. Look at the Muslim community. They're told to vote for Sam Joshi. Governor Murphy tells them to vote for Sam Joshi. What the Sam Joshi, Bimal Joshi, and all them do every election season? Attack their community, create racist flyers, kick out the first appointed planning board members in their, their community. Racism has no home here in Edison, New Jersey. I would like to remind you that, Mr. B. Ral Patel, racism has no home here in Edison, New Jersey. And I want to know why the IBA president, the Zero Integrity Indian Business Association, IBA mafia president, is going around saying, we're only going to support Indian candidates, we're only going to support Indians. And I've been saying this on day one. This is coming from their own mouth. It's about time South Edison wake up and start voting for people who represent the South Edison community and stop, start voting for your own people. Because all they do is they laugh at you. They expect to receive your vote just for being on the Democrat. It's time to say, no, I don't care if you're on the Democratic line, I don't care if you're on the Republican line. From now on, we're going to vote for our own people, the same way you guys vote for your own people every election season. And, you know, there's nothing racist about me saying that. I'm just only one with the courage to say the truth because everyone else is afraid to be called racist. I said it. There you go.
Any, any other public comments? Yeah, you can come back second time.
Tony, just call to Pine Street. Just to address again, because Mr. Mohan Patel brought up, this is all about politics. I think it's about two and a half years ago that I started speaking at the board meetings and started coming. And I have not been part of any politics from the beginning then. Just recently, Sam Joshi started running for mayor, but that's basically what, six months ago? So, before that, I don't know what other politics would have been that I was a part of. I've spoken at board meetings and I've had reasons to bring up issues. Every time I speak, I've brought up issues. And if Mr. Mohan Patel thinks that bringing up issues is all political, then he's, he's very, very wrong about that. So, if you want to continue to just say it's politics, that just shows the public that you are being ignorant to what the public really says and what they care about. So, I appreciate that you're showing again your true colors, Mr. Mohan Patel, that you don't care what the public says, and that's the way it's been every.
Your words.
I don't care about your words.
Well, well.
So, just, just again, just to address that, if you think every time I come up here it's political, I don't know what political gain I have by coming up and speaking to you guys. I mean, you're making a big deal that I'm supporting a mayoral candidate, but what does that have to do with any of you guys? Unless, I don't know, maybe it does, but I have no idea what it would be. So, again, you bringing up things that are political shows that you just don't care about what the residents say about the school district. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just don't care about you. That's all.
Well, no, 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 you're done. You're done.
And Mr. Shi, here we go. He's leaving, and it would be nice if you were able to control.
For your information, I'm going to the bathroom. It's none of your damn business.
Mr. Shi, if you were able to control your board members, that would help also. Thank you.
If you can control your mouth, it'll be more helpful.
Really?
Yes.
What have I said about controlling my mouth? Go ahead. Let's go back and forth now. What have I said that I need to control my mouth? Have I said anything rude to you? Have I? Answer. Go ahead. Have I said anything rude to you? Have I ever personally attacked you at a meeting? No. And you can watch all the tapes. So, telling me to watch my mouth, telling a resident to watch his mouth? Really? Again, it shows your leadership and how you really care about the residents.
You done? Okay. Yeah, Rich.
Rich Winnie, I haven't been at many board education meetings, but this is one of the first ones I've attended in a while. But I can't believe how, all it is is talking politics here instead of board education issues. You know, what does the guy have to raise his hand to go to the bathroom? I mean, come on. But, you know, when you throw grease in the frying pan and he adds to it, he deserves the consequences. But anyway, this sounds like worse than a council meeting. I mean, the political going around between this one and that one and that one and this. You know, stick to board education issues. You know, I mean, that's what it's all about. Talk about more schools. Talk about people voting for more schools, you know? And the overcrowding in this district, not whether the guy wants to go to the bathroom or not. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna say, the people who come here and say they're not political, they're not bringing politics into the meeting, are the ones who are the most political, who brings the most politics into this meeting.
Correct.
Totally. Okay. It's, that's what it is. That's a fact. So, any other public comments? I see none? Can I close, motion to close the public comment?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay. Dr. Chen, are all in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second. Dr. Chen, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.